For everyone's patience as we have a delayed meeting. Okay, I want to welcome everyone to our special meeting of March twenty third, two thousand and twenty one. And with us this evening, we have three commissioners. We have Commissioner James Wilburn. We have Commissioner Jenny Rose and myself, Lad Smith. We do have a full commission unfortunately, two other commissioners were unable to join us this evening. And but we're grateful to have this forum also joining us this evening is Mr. Loeb, our ombuds person. Our deputy ombuds person is Louvi May Omana. Thank you for being here. Also with us this evening is our OPOC assistant Christina Cody. And then finally, our legal counsel David Biggeman. Thank you again all of you for being here. The agenda is before you and I would happily entertain a motion to approve that agenda.
I move to approve the agenda for tonight.
Thank you. All those in favor of approval of this agenda this evening, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Next on the agenda are the minutes from, let me get back to my agenda or yeah. February sixteenth minutes you have before you. Hopefully you've had a chance to take a look at those minutes and and if there are no deletions or additions, feel free to make a motion to approve those minutes.
So move.
Thank you. Thank you. All those in favor of approval of the February sixteenth regular meeting minutes, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving into our items for the evening, public forum, Ms. Cody, do you have anyone signed up to speak this evening?
There is nobody signed up to speak at this time.
Okay, I just got that back to my camera and it looks like we have a fourth commissioner, Commissioner Navarado, thank you for being here this evening. It's good to see you and thank you again for being here. So Ms. Cody, you said that we have no one for public forum. Okay, so we'll head over to our monthly report format change, Ms. Cody. I think is the best person here to explain what is going on with with what you're seeing. It's quite different. So Ms. Cody, please share with us.
Right. Good evening, commissioners, and I'm going to share my screen just so that we can have a better view here. Okay, so here is the new look of the monthly report. One of the things that our former report had was a lot of words. So we wanted to do something that cut down on the wordiness, made it easier to understand and quite frankly, let people be more likely to read it. So what we did was we came up with more of a graph driven monthly report. So you can see we'll go over complaints. So this first box here will have the complaints for the month of February, we had one inadequate response demeanor complaint. And that was pertaining to a possible relative of an SPD officer. So that's been submitted. We will also have the referrals right next to it. We have five internal affairs referrals that range in questions that range from, so for example, the the example that I have here is a community member had a use of force question during an arrest that occurred outside of the year. As some people might not know, our office per ordinance is only allowed to take complaints that occur within the year of the occurrence. So that because it was just outside of the year, we sent it over to internal affairs. Plus, we have a lot of citizens who call our office because they're not exactly sure where else to go. They sometimes think that we, as the the OPO represent all members of law enforcement complaints. And that's, you know, not not true. So we're not able to help them in the manner that we normally would. So what I do is I listen to the citizen, let them talk a bit, and then get their concerns complaint over to the appropriate department. So for the two that we have here, one went to the Spokane jail and one went to SPD communications. So what I'm going to be doing going forward is making sure that the highlights kind of speak to those basic things. And then, of course, we'll have the regular information on the websites as well. So below you can see that we have a little bit of a decrease in complaints over year to date numbers. So from two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty one, in January, we had three complaints this January, we had zero. Three complaints in February and one complaint this year. So we saw a decline in complaints year over year. Moving on to the next page, we'll talk about contacts. As as an office, we are consistently attending all all kinds of things. I should say Bart and Louvi May are always attending various meetings and such. So these will be where we list the oversight activities. And you can kind of see here, we've also included like SPD engagement pieces. So the review boards, the special cases, all the things that Bart and Louvi may really work on. Not all, but a lot of the things that they work on will be in this box here. And you can see, and Bart will go over this in more detail shortly after I finish showing you the new report. Then we have training and other activities. So a big thing, obviously, training, I feel like is pretty self sufficient and explanatory here. And then highlights, we have a few different categories that I grouped them into. One is outreach. The other is oversight and the other is other. So there's a ton of different meetings and group committees and things that we're all involved in. So that's where this section will come in. From there, it just moves into upcoming, what's coming up over the next couple of months. Obviously, one of the big things that we have is the OPO, OPOC annual report presentations. And then I also wanted to make sure that the people seeing the report also know about the OPOC meeting. So that's where that comes into place. This is subject to change per feedback that we receive. I want to make it as fluid as possible. I want people to read this. This is the so what? This is why, you know, I want people to understand what we do. There's, you know, people that don't, this is a pretty straightforward layout. This is what our office does for the most part. Obviously, it doesn't have everything, but so and it's straightforward and it just really does focus on the so what? So that is the new layout in a nutshell, and I encourage any feedback that you guys might have.
Christina?
Yes.
I failed to mention that this was your initiative. If I understand that correctly, that this is something that you took on yourself and and I was able to join briefly in a debrief earlier in the week, last week. And I just want to say for me as as one of the five commissioners, this really does help me a great deal to synthesize the information and in a visual and rather pleasing way. I really appreciate the effort you put into to doing this, and I think it's going to be really helpful. Especially for, you know, as commissioners, the new commissioners come on board. I think this really is just very user friendly and provides us with some some good insights. Thank you for doing that.
It's my pleasure. And I think another piece of this is that this will make it easier to compile all of the data into the annual report at the end of the year. So we're not waiting as long. So it's more of a streamlining process for all of the reports.
So I hear you saying that we could easily transfer the a lot of this graph, graph work into the final annual report.
Yes, but Louvi May is a much better graph maker than I am. So she can take whatever information she'd like from them or the the graph, but she's she's a graph guru and I'm a graph beginner.
Okay. Yeah, nicely done.
I'm gonna stop sharing the screen real quick.
Okay.
I was just gonna say, Christina, this looks really good. It's very easy to read, very, I'm looking over on my computer because that's where I have it. But very easy to read. Just a nice job. Nicely done. Thank you.
So Mr. Loeb, I think I've heard a reference that you're going to go into a bit more detail. Or I think Christina.
Well, except she didn't mean anything to talk about, sir.
Right, she did a pretty good job.
Yeah, I think I'll let her brief every month. So just some basic numbers. I know I'm looking at this new format and going, ah, I missed my old format because the numbers were right there for me to just read off. It it seems like it was a lighter month, but as I started to write down all the extra things that we were doing, it was a very, very busy February. So one hundred and thirty six total contacts to our office. We had five citizen interviews. Christina already said we submitted one complaint through Blue Team and seven different referrals. We reviewed nine special cases and those special cases, once again, are use of force cases, collisions and pursuits. We review those in preparation for the review boards that we attend. We should probably say we had, we reviewed six use of force cases because we also had a deadly force review board on the six twenty three West Montgomery officer involved shooting that occurred. So that's a number that we can I certified three cases. We did a lot more casework so far in March. So you're going to see those numbers start to pick up as well as interviews and internal affairs. We've done quite a few interviews this month. And I returned one case for further investigation. I think we had some back and forth with internal affairs regarding the new tentative agreement. And so we're kind of going through that and trying to make sure that we're all in agreement on on what some of it says. Unfortunately, there's still some ambiguity in there. But I think we've found a pretty good way forward. Although it didn't happen in February, I will say that Louvi May has started to listen in on some interviews. We're going to do a little bit of a training process for actual live interviews and then Louvi May and I are going to go over some old interviews and just have and just do the question period from there to see if she would have any questions. So we'll 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 start working on that training thing. It shouldn't be an issue for a while. I don't tend on being out of office for some time. But when the time comes, she'll be plenty prepared. One conversation that I did have with the investigators and lieutenant was that if she was going to be involved in a case, I'd like her to be involved start to finish. So that it didn't just ping pong around into different cases. I'd like to her to see the process from the beginning all the way through the end. And the end is certification and that's something that will require a little bit of training too. Not as much as you might think though, because we've done a very critical review of use of force cases over the last year. And I think I put some numbers together. We've reviewed over one hundred and fifty cases in that regard. So I think we are on track to making that that happen. But that's most more of a March's review. But this month, I'll say that because of the tentative agreement, right at the beginning of February, Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Rose and I and Mr. Binghamman were invited to a meeting by the mayor and city legal with their labor attorney in order to begin review of not begin review, they give us a chance to review the tentative agreement in advance before it was published. That occurred at the beginning of February. So the first couple of weeks of February, we were really working hard on on that. We provided some feedback and we saw that some of that feedback was actually included in the the public tentative agreement. So we were thankful for that opportunity. Another thing that we did in February, it will reflect on the March report, is that we offered one mediation on a case. And all of the prep work for that mediation all took place in February, but the mediation itself was held on the second of March. So that's the first one of those that we've done since since COVID hit us. So I think it's a good process. I think for a while there, it it left my mind as an option simply because of the pandemic, but we found a way to keep it socially distanced. We even did a live mediation and it worked out just fine. The one highlight that I think that I should point out is that in the new tentative agreement, I think it's an agreement. I just don't know if it's been signed yet. But I think it's all been ratified by the guild and the city and it's just a process thing now. But it will be easier to request a mediation moving forward. Before, we were supposed to do it before any investigation had started. And and now we we can request mediation up at any point in the investigation up to the chain of command review. So once it starts going through the disciplinary process, then of course mediation would be off the table. But sometimes as you're going through a case and you find some additional information, it's that's what makes you lean towards a mediation. You don't always have all that information right off the bat. The officers involved in the last in the last one did an excellent job and I thought it went very, very well. February, we also welcomed Commissioner Navarrete to our office. We were able to sit down with her and see some of her goals moving forward. We did a lot of work on the annual report. We were able to get that draft copy out to the commission. At least, I think it was two weeks ago. It might have even been three weeks ago that we sent out that draft for your review. We were able to get your comments back. We have them incorporated in in the draft that we attached to the agenda packet. So thank you for that. We began reviewing, I think I've said this already, we began reviewing the the new guild contract with internal affairs. So we're, we had a sit down meeting and the lieutenant over there, Lieutenant Coles, he's actually made a I'll just say a spreadsheet for lack of a better word, where he has the different tasks and the timelines all associated with it. So there are some adjustments, but it has loosened the pressure on 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 some of the timelines. So that part's been pretty good. Use of force summit classes finished up in February. And outside of the annual report, the monthly report, we started to really engage with the city in regards to the deputy police ombudsman position, which we'll be briefed a little bit later in this meeting. One thing that I I've done the last two months is I've attended the Spokane Human Rights Commission meeting, also virtual. But last month, they had a a discussion on setting up the Office of Civil Rights and and having that be funded and and staffed. And it was interesting to listen to the briefs there because I think this would be a unique opportunity for our commissioners to maybe work with some of their commissioners because a lot of the same issues that we've been dealing with in the ombudsman world, they're considering what to do with for the Office of Civil Rights. And it's proper budget, it's proper authorities, all of those things that we've kind of been, we have a bit of a head start. But I know that they would appreciate your input on on how best to consider moving forward in regards to that office. And I think that's it. Do you have any questions for me, sir, or commissioners?
No, no questions at this point. Any other commissioners, any clarifications, questions?
Uh, no.
Okay. And okay, so we're moving to the the OPO annual report. And I know that that's this is always a quite a big task for the office to compile of the year's information and get it into a readable form for those who want to, you know, find out what happened in two thousand and twenty. So I have on here, I believe, Ms. Omana and Mr. Loeb, you are continuing with with that as well. And commissioners, you should have a copy of of both the OPO annual report and the OPOC report.
Yes, so I will go ahead and give the overview of the report. And then if I don't know the answer, I think Bart is also on this item, so I will be talking to him. So so in review, a lot happened last year. I will just kind of highlight a few things before I get into the statistical analysis of data complaint stuff. So last year, we celebrated the first ombuds day on October eighth, two thousand and twenty, after a city council proclamation. That was kind of a national effort in oversight to get that sort of recognition locally. And we were able to work together with council president Beggs to get that done for Spokane. So that was good. We also published our first closing report in the spring on a case alleging excessive force, as you all well know by now. And that resulted in twenty three recommendations that we made to the police department. I'll touch on that a little bit more later. Challenges that we faced last year, you know, we all have our purpose and roles. But one of the things that we face challenges from was the police guild. The chief asked us to review the police response to the protests last May following the death of George Floyd. And we still haven't received those documents. And by now, any recommendations that we could make are no longer timely and are likely moot. For the second time, the police ombudsman was the guild attended attempted to remove him from the IA investigation process. Other administrative challenges after three long years. One good thing that we had is that our administrative specialist has been promoted to full time. So that's good. But at the same time that we are working on that, we still didn't get any luck getting the city to honor the OPOC's decision to promote me to deputy ombudsman in two thousand and nineteen. As of two thousand and twenty, there was no action, but as Bart alluded to, there has been action as of this month. And I've tried to stay out of that mostly because it's about me, but since I'm briefing the topic, I wanted to say thank you to Bart, Commissioner Rose, Commissioner Smith, for all the work that you've done in advocating for me throughout, but recently especially, taking up the issue again, and then to the other commissioners for your support. And then I would be remiss not to mention the impact of COVID nineteen. The everyday operations of the OPO has been relegated to working remotely from home. We've done most of our work through emails and WebEx meetings. And then we've obviously had these meetings, which we've been pretty consistent with having throughout COVID. Despite this in, or yeah, and despite this in two thousand and twenty, we still were able to continue to receive complaints and contact with the community. In, or last year, we submitted seven letters of appreciation or commendation to officers, all of which were from community members. We conducted one hundred and twenty nine citizen interviews and submitted fifty complaints to IA despite a surge in complaints following the protests related to George Floyd's death last summer. That's still down from seventy seven in two thousand and nineteen. And then for contacts, it was a decrease, had a decrease of sixty two contacts compared to two thousand and nineteen. In terms of the allegations made in the complaints from the community, the most popular, I guess, allegation is still inadequate response. Every year that I've tracked this data, it's always been inadequate response. There were sixty one allegations received for internal complaints, the most popular, I don't like that word, but the most used, I guess, allegation was policy standard violation. And every allegation is a policy standard violation, but if it's not one of the most common ones, it kind of just falls under the blanket of policy standard violation. So I dug a little deeper to see what these policy standard violation allegations were. And there were nine, and of the nine, three of them were for computer misuse. We also received numerous COVID related complaints on officers for not wearing masks or for lack of enforcing mask mandates. There were no clear guidance at the beginning of COVID on how the mandates could or would be enforced. We also saw a lot of intersection with HIPAA that created challenges. By the late summer and early fall, the chief had provided guidance that when safe and reasonable officers should wear masks. And as far as I know, that's where we stand on the mask policy or guidance on that. I don't think there's an official policy. As far as the cases that were sent to the ombudsman for certification, zero were declined. Sixty three percent of complaints only received a preliminary review and were classified as inquiry suspended or closed. The OPO did observe IA's continued practice of sending cases to to a supervisor for training and mentoring when they were closed for an inquiry, which means they weren't required to take any further action. But they still sent it for further further action to the supervisor. Of the community generated cases that received a chain of command review, seventeen percent were unfounded, exonerated or sustained, and five percent were sustained. And by when I generated these numbers, there were still some cases that hadn't been fully, the outcome hadn't been determined yet. So the remainder remainder are to be determined with these numbers. As of, as far as critical incidents, they were down from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty, from five to three. The subjects in these cases, two are white and deceased, and one is Native American and survived. An issue that I think we've discussed before, but I want to just re raise is that the information on critical incidents that we receive is very limited and restricted to the SIR team press releases. And this is a change following I nine forty that kind of leaves out the current system that was already in place prior to the passage of it. Other statistics of interest, calls for service were down fourteen percent last year. And we can't say for certain why, but certainly COVID plays an impact on that. Um, and that likely impacted the num, lower numbers across the board of these statistics that we track. So we had lower numbers in non-deadly use of force pursuits and preventable collisions, specifically with pursuits down 53%. I know they recently, the department recently updated the pursuit policy where an officer may engage in a pursuit. When they can engage in a pursuit is very limited. And so, and the department has rigorously enforced this policy, so that also likely plays a part in the steep decline in pursuits. Um, as far as recommendations, we submitted 23 recommendations that were as part of the closing report I mentioned earlier. And I'll just cover the subject matter because we're all pretty familiar with that report at this point. So the subject area include the I included the IA investigation process, the chain of command review process, review board functions and the analysis it conducts, training, culture of accountability, K-9, exceptional techniques, and body worn camera release. The police chief agreed to implement or partially implement 21 of the 23 recommendations. The ones that he did not implement had to do with body worn camera release within a 45-day timeframe. That's kind of a best practices timeframe that other agencies across the country adhere to. The other one is IA investigators should initiate a complaint when they become aware of potential allegations of misconduct. And then the last one was consider removing exceptional techniques and list every force device an officer can use. So that concludes my overview of the annual report. If you have any questions, I will try to answer them.
Uh, wow. I'm a bit speechless. That was a pretty comprehensive OPO annual report. I think it's one of the best ones. I've seen and a lot, not to say that your previous ones weren't good, but I guess it was just a really interesting year. But the graphics seem to be really, really top-notch and and really very easy to grasp a lot of information, and I'm really, really impressed with this document. And on the onset of, you know, when you first started your presentation, I got a little disappointed because here, Chief Mydell, if I have this narrative correct, came to you, came to our office, the OPO office, and and asked that you do a review of the of the May 31st protest and and then to see it just kind of fade into Never Neverland is is really, really disappointed, disappointing to me as a commissioner. And and sadly, you know, the the, I see a lot of other cities doing this kind of in-depth, in-depth analysis of what occurred with each city's police department. And here, this this golden opportunity just just vanished. I just, um, anyway, I hate to take away the your report, though it's it's outstanding, and I don't have any further questions or comments, but I thank you for for that effort. And I I suspect that the city council, when you present this, will be rather impressed with how things took, you know, how how you conveyed important information for 2020. Other commissioners, I don't know if you want to weigh in or have a question or clarification of Commissioner Rose?
Um, on page nine, I don't know why I didn't catch this before. I'm just curious. On the top 10 allegations of complaints, and we have community and internal. Libby May, could you explain internal? Is that within the system, the orange?
Or? Um, yeah, so those are the ones generated by the Spokane Police Department.
That's what I thought. Okay, that's that's the only question I had. Thank you.
And I I guess time will tell, you know, of the 23 recommendations, you indicated that that the chief model has concurred with you on 21 of them, is that right? Either partially or fully?
Yeah, at least partially or fully, yeah. And a lot of them are in progress, so. We're still like, for instance, several had to do with internal affairs, mostly procedural things to kind of standardize the review process, and so we're working with IA right now on those sorts of things. So lots of things going on.
Yeah, I'm just curious, you know, is we, I presume that the office will track just how much they are implementing any of your recommendations. Is there the possibility of for 2021 that there's some kind of a summary or an assessment of 2020 recommendations and were they actually followed through on?
Yeah, so typically in the body of the report, I'll have the top section say like follow-up to the previous year if it wasn't completed. And I didn't provide a kind of close the loop summary in the previous year.
Okay. And finally, for me, let's code is is it possible for you to mail us a copy of the published OPO report?
Of course, yes.
And the OPLC as well. I just would like to see the spiffy document in my hands to turn the pages, so. Yeah, all right, thank you. Any other comments or clarifications? Okay. Uh, moving on with our agenda, I believe we're into the new business and oh, wait, wait, um, I guess the commission at this point needs to approve of this, oh, the annual report. Is that right? This would be a timely time to do that? Okay. So, um, we have had the the OPO report for 2020 presented to the commissioners. And we've had a chance to ask questions. We've had a chance to survey the report before this evening. And I'm yeah, or I'm presuming that we are ready to to make a motion to approve the 2020 annual report for the OPO.
Motion to adopt.
Thank you, James. And do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, thank you. Before us is accepting the OPO report for 2020. All those in favor of adopting this report, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, can I think that was all of us and okay, it has been approved and adopted. Thank you so much for for the hard work that went into that. I really appreciate it. Now for commission business, Commissioner Rose, who was the chair for the calendar year 2020, will now update us on the OPLC annual report.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, so basically, you'll find a lot of things in the OPOC annual report that were are contained in the OPO report. But it starts out with a letter from the chair. That was me, like Commissioner Smith said. So basically, in my letter, it was a lot about what we've talked about this evening, about the report that Chief Mydell asked OPO to write and for May 31st, and we weren't able to do that. So that is in there in my letter. It talks about the 23 recommendations. Talks about Libby May's position to deputy ombudsman. So basically, it's almost pairing with the OPO report. Um, I talked a little bit about the commissioners that left us, of course, in 2020, Commissioner Kelly and Commissioner Holman, and why they left. And then, as you can see, we have our little bios. And then we go into the summary of the OPOC's actions, talking a lot about COVID and the shutdowns and, but still meeting. And then we did some updates on, if you look at page six, I don't know if you have it in front of you. We did some updates on previous OPOC actions that we had taken in 2019. And again, it's with the Libby May's position, and then also with Christina's position, but woohoo! We did get it approved, so that was in December. So that's part of the action. And then talking about the closing report on case 19-040, the use of force there. And then our resolution to get our training waived and our right alongs requirement that we went through last year because of COVID, we could not do that. And then talk a little bit about community engagement, but however, due to COVID, there was not much community engagement, unless it was, unless it was online. And then, of course, the training was basically not there, except for the NACO online virtual convention that a lot of us took the various classes. So, um, we know, we talked about doing, if you remember last, I think it was February, we talked about doing another retreat. Well, that certainly went down because because we couldn't meet. But hopefully, when things open up, we'll be able to do that. And then on page eight, you're going to see all the recommendations from the OPO report plugged into our report. And what the response has been and what the progress has been for each of those recommendations. And I think the recommendations took most of the pages because I was thinking, man, this is a really nice, it was like eight pages before I sent it to Christina. And all those, to put in all those recommendations. And so now we're up to, I don't know how many pages, but that's okay. And then the evaluation of the police ombudsman and the office, I hope you guys took time to read that. And you'll see what our thoughts were on that. A plus. So and I think that kind of takes us to the end of that. So it'll be a pretty short report on April 12th to city council. Because I'm certainly not going to go over all the, you know, things from the OPO report. So are there any questions for me? Okay, so that's it, Commissioner Smith.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Rose. Really appreciate the 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 brief on the the OPLC annual report and I was really, really glad that we were able to get a copy or get the rough draft to us in a really a fantastic timeline. So thank you for that. Okay, with no further clarifications, question, oh, yes.
I just, I'm sorry, Commissioner Smith, can I add something? We were doing this for 2019, last October. So we really, you know, put a push on this, thanks to the, everyone in the OPO office to get this out in March and not wait till October.
Yeah.
So I just want to say thank you to everybody for their, for their push on this.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Graphs kept going back and forth, back and forth, but you know, thank you, everybody that helped on this. I really, really appreciate it. It made it so much easier.
Yeah, good, good. Yeah, good point, Commissioner Rose. Okay, um, without further ado, um, I believe we're ready to adopt the OPLC annual report if I can get a motion for that.
So move.
And a second, please?
I'll second.
Okay, all those ready to approve the OPLC 2020 annual report, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Okay, it is unanimous, and it has been approved and adopted. Thank you very, very much. I appreciate that. All right, I I'm sure Commissioner Rose and the OPO staff are feeling a sense of relief. One less report to work on. So let me take a look here at my agenda. I need to go back up to the top here. One moment, please. Go. Okay, um, yes, the deputy ombudsman position update. As was already indicated earlier by Ms. Almana, and I think maybe another voice, we heard a bit about where we've been, which in the last two years has been nowhere. And I have to commend Zomana for patience and you know, I'll leave it at that as to why we had to wait so long. And without getting into a lot of nitty gritty detail, it's suffice to say that there is some movement happening in HR. And I won't go into the the details of that, but there is movement and there is, whether that movement is progress remains to be seen. But I I think we're, we are feeling somewhat optimistic that maybe there is some movement in the right direction. Mr. Logue, is there anything that you would have added to what I just said about this, this subject?
I'd no, sir. Sorry, that was the wrong unmute button. No, no, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I think that's, that's good, but there's significant movement and and I am, I really think we're going to get closure on it very, very soon.
Okay, fantastic. So to be continued. Thank you. And back to my agenda here, this is kind of an interesting one. Hopefully, you noticed at the very tail end of of your documents, and thank you, Christina, for everything that you provided for us this evening. It's really comprehensive, but maybe if you haven't, go to the very last page of this evening's packet. And you will find an ad that was written by Chief Mydell and published in the Spokane Review. Let me see what that date is, sometime in February, I believe. And February 7th, and it came to the Washington State Legislature House Bill 1054. And with, um, I I'll just throw in my two cents here that, um, you know, I I feel for the police departments who feel as though a lot of their tools are being taken away. And and that, again, this is this is a layman who obviously not an officer, and everything I'm about to say is is very opinion driven. And and I I too, I guess I would be jarred or perplexed with if my working conditions are going to change significantly. Um, I think every profession has changes that occur that that we don't, we do not want to embrace. We don't see any kind of value to it until we're actually in the thick of it all. But I don't know if any of you caught the, a couple of comments here that, um, first, that those of us who are reading this opinion piece from Chief Mydell are getting labeled emotional. If if we're trying to look at change and how critical change is in what we do, those of us who are citizens in the city are more or less being labeled emotional in our response to police brutality, whether it's in this city or any city. But that I think that the the real the real problem I have with the language in this opinion piece is twice Chief Mydle indicates that if these measures are approved by the legislature that this, the cause and effect, the effect of this would be more shootings, more police officer shootings and I don't know if that takes your breath away at all or not. I just felt that it was important that we bring out it out into the light of day. And obviously it was brought in, you know, brought out to our attention in the paper. And I'm to be honest, I'm grappling with that language and, and maybe it's just me overreacting. We're all entitled to our opinions. So I will lay this out to you if you have any, any thoughts or feelings about that or do we just move on and let the paper, let his comments go forward?
I don't understand fully what the comments were in reference to. If it's not for shooting unarmed people, I don't know what when he say you're emotional, what was he referring to?
Well, you, that, that, the community, that our community is, is, is taking notice and watching what's going on and we're disgusted by some of the tactics that have been used in the past. You know, you can go back to the pickup truck and the K nine and, and something that we all witnessed. There's an example here where the K nine is, could become no longer a valued tool by S P D. So is, are, are we being emotional because we do not, we don't, if citizens think that, that the K nine was used properly in that situation? So I don't know if I'm answering your question, Commissioner Wilburn, and whether you've had a chance to actually read the article. So I guess, I guess the point of this agenda item is just kind of bringing this out to your attention. I'm not hearing or seeing a lot of reaction to it from other commissioners, so I'm I can, oh, I see a hand raised. Yes, Commissioner, another I take?
Thank you. I feel that we, we do need to address this. I felt that I also read that and again, being in the Brown immigrant community in Spokane, that's just gaslighting on things that we have seen and we have gone through. We're not emotional, we feel it. And definitely I am in support of addressing this comment.
Okay. Commissioner Wilburn, do you have any further thoughts or any? Because I don't know whether I really addressed what you were getting at, Commissioner Wilburn, or earlier.
Well, I, you know, with, with our experience, with my experience, sicking the dogs on me or things like that, that goes way back and, and, and you know, and for no reason. I mean, the dog, the, you, you sick the dog on me, why can't you just command me? You, you know, instead they come in with the dog, leading, the dog leading the, 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 the thing before you say anything. And I'm saying, yeah, that, that, that'll make anybody concerned, you know, because if you shoot the dog or cut him or whatever, now you, you, and you got yourself in deeper trouble. You don't get a chance to say anything for the dog biting, you know what I mean? And so I, I don't understand why one would say a person is emotional, too emotional about things that's been happening to them down through the years, man. It's just lately that people have been able to see what people have been talking about for years and years, for decades, for centuries, you know? And now all of a sudden you're too emotional. Many of us are too dead.
Commissioner Wilburn, thank you. That's been heard loud and clear by me and I appreciate your thoughts and definitely, yeah, I thank you for that. Commissioner or Commissioner Rose, go ahead.
So I was going to read for Commissioner Wilburn the sentence about the emotion that Chief Mydle stated in his guest opinion. He says, we continue to evolve and use data-driven research, not emotion, to stay at the forefront, forefront of best practices. So that was one part, Commissioner Wilburn, where he used emotion. However, I'm going to go back to what Commissioner Smith said. It makes us look like we want change and of practices, ba, or tactics based on emotion. Well, yes, we do. From what we see, not only in the city of Spokane, but across the country. So my, here's my thought, instead of pushing back and writing an op ed. And granted, we are not police officers. We do not know what they go through. We do not know anything about that. But instead of pushing back, how about, this is going to be really, I don't know, quasi, why don't we just work together and figure out by the research what practices are the best? He talks about if House Bill ten fifty-four goes through, now, uh, police dogs might not be allowed. And what was the other one? Protective equipment like helmets? Really? Is that in the bill that you get where protective equipment? So I, you know, I don't know about that. I did go online right now to look to see where this bill is. As of March nineteenth, it passed to the Rules Committee for second reading. I don't know how far this bill's going to go. On February, I mean, excuse me, March eighteenth, they went to the Senate Minority and they said, do not pass. So who knows where this bill is going to go. I'm going to, when it's time for the commissioners to speak out, I'm going to tell you what happened to the Senate Bill fifty-four thirty-six from last month that I was talking about. But this is very interesting, this particular bill. So, and I did not see this guest opinion, so thank you for having it. I, I missed it and I get the paper every single day, so thank you.
Um, thank you, Commissioner Rose and Mister Logue, I, I thought I saw your hands go up a moment ago.
You did. Thanks, sir. I don't think it was last week, maybe it was, because it's been a busy month as well. But Louie May had a chance to be on a panel for the United States Commission on Civil Rights. Focusing on reducing force. And I attended that and I took the opportunity to, to make some public comment there, which I thought I would just read to you, if you don't mind. We only had a couple of minutes, so it, it was, I was scribbling as fast as I could. But it went like this. My name is Bart Logan. I'm the police ombudsman for the city of Spokane. I couldn't miss the opportunity to make a comment to such a distinguished panel. When I look at force, I always try to push necessary into a discussion that largely focuses on reasonable. I understand the reluctance that police departments have on creating more restrictive policies than are mandated by Graham versus Connor. However, I'm stuck with this idea, there must be a way to reduce use of force while keeping officers safe. One quick comment. They talked a lot about data collection. I'd like us to begin by trying to study the use of force in a consistent manner, which means that our data collection on force has to be consistent. But I'm going off script for a second here. A couple of years ago, we put a, a request or a recommendation into S P D to put a box on their report so that all wrist locks, takedowns, some lower level uses of force could also be studied as well. And so far that hasn't gone anywhere. But we did just have a, a presentation by Bob Scales in which he talked about disproportionate contacts. And I think since we've been here, we've seen disproportionate contacts, force always come up, but we don't really know the scope, the complete scope without looking at all of the right data. And that includes these lower level uses of force. There are some jurisdictions that would say any action taken on somebody that is resisting in order to force their compliance would be documented as a reportable use of force. We're far less stringent than that. But back to topic. Even within police agencies, it's clear that there is a higher propensity to use physical force by younger officers than by more veteran officers. And when I talk to those more veteran officers, I usually get a comment like this, I'm too old to get into the mix like that. I've learned to talk my way out of it. But really, when we talk about that, those older officers, they develop the skill set over time, over a significant period of time doing the job of policing. They've learned to talk their, their way out of having to use force. So I know there's a lot of other factors in it, but let's just simply call it for sake of discussion, learned de-escalation that's happened over time. So I'd propose a further emphasis on training de-escalation. Departments and the state of Washington put significant emphasis on using force in police training. They do it both in the academy as well as in annual refreshers. While there are some don't use force, use force scenarios throughout, the general tone of that training is getting an officer or a trainee who may have never been in a fight before to prepare their minds towards using force. We require annual recertifications in using force. We have officers come in for a defensive tactics refresher, taser, O C R pepper spray, firearms. They do a refresher on lateral neck restraints in Spokane. I think we need to commit to further emphasizing not having to use force. So I proposed to the U S Commission that is it possible to come up with a de-escalation certification? Something that might also require annual refreshers. Instead of a one and done, we took a course and we're finished, we never have to talk about it. Officers get better at it every minute they're on the street. So that's, that's one thing that I definitely want to highlight. But the other point I want to make is that we, I talked about this op ed. We had an op ed which was written against some of the current Senate bills discussing police reform in Washington. In the op ed, the person said, if the tools are taken away for intermediate force, lateral neck restraint, some chemical munitions, some canine usage, it will likely lead to more police shootings. And I just submit to you as a commission, there has to be a way to keep officers safe and fulfilling their duties without immediately saying, we will likely have to shoot more people. We have to be committed to that. And that's what I said to the U S Commission.
Amon Aubrey was unarmed. Do you think that if they had stopped and talked to him about why they were concerned that he was jogging through their community, there would be a confrontation? He didn't know, they just shot him. Then you, you got the guy that was selling cigarettes in New York on, on, you know, and they put him in a chokehold. I mean, unarmed, he, only, he, the only thing he was armed with was cigarettes. And these are things that we saw on camera. What, what we've been complaining about is the, are the things that's been happening down through the years that we've been telling people about and people being, oh, you're just blowing things up, you know? Now, now people got cell phones and they can see. So what we're saying is, here's an opportunity for us to disengage or de-escalate, as you would say. Some of the things that's been happening to people who mean no harm. I mean, you know, you, you, you just walk up and shoot them, like this guy that got shot in the back seven times, man. Heck, in the cowboy days, you shoot a man in the back, they hang you, man. Here, you know, it's strange group, you know, uh, uh, and so it's timeout. It's timeout. Things, things have got to change. And so that's why we're addressing what's happening with T D. And as you were talking, I was reading this, uh, House Bill twelve oh two, which seeks to remove qualified immunity protections for law enforcement. Some mistakenly believe qualified immunity is a special immunity for police that in, isolates them from the liability cases. Well, that's true. I mean, you get a guy like, like what, being tried now for what happened to George Floyd. You can't sue him. And yet the whole world saw what he was doing and he can keep his two dollars. You know, and I'm saying, we, there are actually things that benefit officers who are wrong. And they are, we, the argument is continue to allow them to do that. And I think that's why there is a, an oversight commission to address those things, you know, so to, to, to say we're over emotional about addressing those things, we've been emotional for four hundred and one years, man. And, and now is the time, we got the opportunity to address them. Yeah, we're, we're, we're addressing them.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilburn. Appreciate those, those thoughts. So Mister Logue, and if I heard you correctly, one idea that you're presenting to the commission could be a recommendation for de-escalation, which we've, which you've done various infrequently, right? I mean, you've done, you've, you've, in your recommendations throughout the last few years, embedded is usually, you know, how can we de-escalate? Is that correct in what I'm saying?
Well, I think it's not just about de-escalation. I think that is part of it. And everything that we're writing so far in our office is focused on, well, really for the last four or five years, we've been focused on force and trying to reduce it and keep officers safe at the same time. And frankly, I think we've seen some success in Spokane. We've seen things happen. You know, there are times where, where there's a, a use of force. I just don't have any questions. Because I can see why it was done all the way through. And that can include officer-involved shootings. I mean, I think our most recent one where the person left the vehicle firing at officers. I don't really have a lot of questions in that, in regard to that shooting. At, at least without an, an in-depth study, right? So we can look, always look at things more deeper. But in those reviews, I think we gained some ground with Chief Mydle in the last month or two. Louie May and I had a meeting with him and we talked about trying to really push those tactical reviews in regards to use of, uses of force, especially after the disciplinary process is over. Once, once all those decisions are complete, we can really, really focus on the hows and the whats and the whys so that we can see if we can prevent something. It's not saying that the officer did anything wrong. It's just looking at it critically to see if there could have been another way to do it. And then if so, to train on that. So they do that to some extent in the use of force review board. We're just trying to push through a little deeper format. And we are starting to see some changes. So I, I think, I, I, I think Chief Mydle's on board. As a matter of fact, I've heard him say numerous times, and he's definitely said it. and he's definitely said it to me numerous times, that we, the Spokane Police Department does not use force because we can't. We use force because we have to. And if that's the standard, I think that's a good place to start. So that's really another way to say the word necessary. We use force because it's necessary. So there's a lot of things to talk about in regards to uses of force. It's a big, big topic. Louie May and I have been engaged on it for the last four and a half years, and we're not gonna let up on that.
So, a great discussion about this article. But as a commission, I've heard Commissioner Rose mention not pushing back, but just, I don't know whether it's gonna be all that useful to do that. But we have Commissioner Navarrete, who feels that something ought to be said or a statement of some sort. So, do we do that as a commission? Or do we do that as an individual in response to the opinion article? Thoughts on that? Commissioner Rose?
Well, looking at the date of the article, February 7th, and then looking at all the action that has happened since February 7th, and there has been substitutions to the bill. I don't know if any, I think, Commissioner Wilburn, you said you were looking at the bill. So I don't know what substitutions have been made, but I could imagine there's quite a few substitutions, usually in a bill, that are made. Not that that's gonna make any difference, but I, usually a response for me should come out immediately. And, and I don't know what, if other activist groups in Spokane, have they done anything or said anything about it? You know, his guest opinion? I don't know. I haven't heard anything from the Peace and Justice League, and I was on one of their online meetings about a month ago. So I'm just kinda curious if anybody has ever, you know, heard, if they have said anything publicly or otherwise. Are the human rights, maybe Bart and Louie May? I mean, I just don't know.
Well, I don't think what I,
Go ahead, Commissioner Wilburn, go ahead.
I don't think what I said should be in any document. That was emotion. And I, and I wanted to share that emotion, because the issue was emotions. And I'm saying, but we want to, as the OPOC, make professional statements. And so that wasn't something that I felt should go in our report. That was me expressing what I've been expressed to, as well as what I feel I should express, you know. And that's the emotion part of it. I can't remove my emotions when I see a man who knee is on a brother's neck for eight minutes and 46 seconds until he kill him, while the man is begging for his mama. I'm emotional, you know. And I'm not saying that should go in the OPOC documents. I'm, I'm discussing the emotion part that lad you mentioned, when, you know, in your opening statement.
Yeah. So I, I'm getting a sense that we have more or less made our, our statements this evening. We've, we've indicated our disdain and disappointment in the language that was used. Is, are we okay with that? Or do we need to do something further?
I'm good, man.
I'm good, too, because just remind everybody that this video is public. So not that everybody's rushing to their computer to watch our meetings, but.
Right. Something, something tells me that, that, I don't know, if Chief Mydell, you know, with his representative with us tonight, whether that, that gets mentioned to him or not. I suspect, I also wonder, I'd like to go back and research what some other, right, you know, some other citizens, and I'm sure they wrote back in response to that. So I, my hunch is, it's been argued, and it's been rebutted. And I'll be curious to go find those rebuttals in the paper. The date of February 7th, as I, I listened to Wisconsin, and so that's probably why I did not see that and was dealing with a family event. Anyhow, I think, yes, Mr. Loeb?
Sir, what if we, what do you think of the idea? If we invited Chief Mydell or a representative to come and just talk about their concerns with some of the Senate bills next, at our next meeting? And, you know, sometimes written word comes across pretty strong. And I know Chief Mydell has explanations for why he feels the way he does. And it might be a good opportunity to engage with the police department on a matter of substance to the community.
Yeah, you know, I got a thumbs up from Commissioner Rose, and I think that's a wonderful idea. Rather than sending him a written, you know, response that will be not as dynamic as a conversation. And we've not had Chief Mydell for quite a long time interacting with this commission. I think it's a brilliant idea. And I am in total favor of that. If he's willing to come and speak to us and have some kind of a dialogue. Do, um, the other commissioners, Navarrete and Commissioner Wilburn, do you, do you like that idea as well? Okay?
I like, yeah, I like Chief Mydell. I'm saying, and I'd be glad to discuss with him my emotions. And discuss with him why I feel that, when you look at what happened on January 6th, there were some police officers in that riot, that sedition. And I'm saying, they're making the same kind of cops on the force right in Spokane. You know, that a member of these groups, you know. And I'm saying, so let's, I'll sit down and talk with Chief Mydell. I mean, you know, if he can't weed them out, I mean, how you know who they are?
Right.
And when they see me, how you know they don't feel different than when they see you, another American?
I'm with you, Mr. Wilburn, on that, most definitely. It's a scary, scary notion that leaves me speechless because of what you just described. But, um, so, would I need to make a motion? Or can I just simply ask, Ms. Cody, if you can arrange for a future meeting, the sooner the better?
Yes, we can do it for a future OPOC meeting.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, we can reach out to Chief Mydell.
That would be awesome. Thank you so much. Okay, good conversation. Let me find my, I'm zipping up to the top to find my agenda. I didn't print these items. My computer is pretty fast. Okay, so we're at the point of Commissioner speak-out. And for me, I feel like I've already spoken on some issues here. Any other commissioners wanna weigh in on anything? Oh, Commissioner Rose, you have some updates on a certain bill in the.
Yeah, if you, if you remember, last month, I spoke on Senate Bill 5436. And I'm looking at how it has gone, which I think it's dead. But I'm gonna ask Mr. Bingham a question. Maybe he knows this. I tried to look it up, and I think I got what I needed. But anyway, it, as of last month, that our meeting, it passed to the Rules Committee for a second reading. The Rules Committee on March 5th relieved, relieved of further consideration and placed on second reading. And then March 17th, the Senate Rules X File, which I'm pretty sure that's the 13 file. Mr. Bingham, do you know? But there's, or maybe Louie May knows. Pretty sure that's not gonna be considered anymore.
You know, I am reading that, too, as you were reading it. I'm looking at it right now. I am not positive what that means. Does Louie May know?
I don't, I'm sorry.
Well, I looked up what X File is, and it says, "The term for the action House and Senate Rules Committee takes on bills that will go no further in the process." So I think it's dead. Often occurs with less active half of a companion bill. But I'm pretty sure that is, it's pretty, pretty dead right now. So, um, so I was gonna mention that. And then I was going to say that, thank you to Ms. Amana. Commissioner Smith, the ACLU article. I, you had some issues, well, not issues. You had things to take care of. And so I started writing the article for the ACLU. They wanted an article. And then Louie May was kind enough to put in a lot of things in the article. So she sent it into ACLU with both our names on it. So I, and as far as we know, that's all, it's, I mean, it's gone to them. We don't know what's gonna happen yet, unless, Ms. Amana, you've heard anything lately since the last email we received?
No, and you're copied on that, so you should know when I know, and I haven't heard anything.
Okay.
Commissioner Rose, thank you so much for, you know, we were just in the beginning stages of discussing it, and boom, you know what happened with my family. So thank you for stepping in there and taking care of that. I really do appreciate it.
So as soon as we hear, we'd be happy, we'd be happy to share it with everybody. It's just basic about how it's going on, what's going on in Spokane with our, you know, ombudsman and the OPO and the OPOC. So some very basic information, how the oversight, how we do oversight in Spokane. So we'll share that when we get further word, or we can share the draft, too, so.
Yeah, that'd be awesome. Other commissioners, Commissioner Navarrete, anything on your mind at the moment?
Um, no, I'd really like to be part of, of talking to the, the human, was it the Commission of Human Rights? Yeah, for the, to assist on the Office of Diversity. I know other outside organizations that I work with, we're really pushing for this. It's very well-needed in Spokane already, so you can count me in.
Okay. And Commissioner Wilburn, and any other thoughts?
Nah, man, I spoke out.
Well, appreciate, yeah, thank you. Also, I learned a lesson this evening to have a little more patience when things don't go well with technology. Not to do the old professor 15-minute, maybe? How about waiting 20 or 25 minutes? So I'm very, very thankful that this worked out tonight and glad that we, we held in there. So thank you for, for that encouragement earlier tonight. And I think that we are done for the evening. In our next meeting, let me look at my agenda here, is April 20th. 20th, okay. So with that, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for, for your attendance. And have enjoyed the rest of your week, okay?
Thank you, everybody.
Good night.